Hello, I'd like to call to order the Monday, March 14th special meeting of the Farver School Committee. Deb, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Agia?
Here.
Mr. Bailey?
Here.
Mr. Har?
Here.
Ms. Laramie?
Here.
Ms. Pereira?
Here.
Mayor Coogan?
Here. Salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. Do we have any citizens' input tonight?
Yes, we do.
Colin Dias, Ray Street. Deb, would you please read that?
Good afternoon, members of the Farver School Committee. I wish to follow up on my citizens' input from last meeting. First of all, thank you to Kevin Agia for standing up for a transparent process in the approval of the school budget. Right after the discussion on the release of the budget, I immediately submitted a public records request to the school committee for the budget and the budget summary, which as to the time of writing this correspondence was not replied to as of yet. I am very confused and puzzled by the administration's response to why the budget is not released as a public record yet and to why the budget is not published on the city's website. The school committee is currently on the budget deliberation meetings regarding the FY '23 budget. The draft budget and draft and budget summary shows the public exactly, dollar for dollar, where the school department plans on expending its funds, taxpayer funds, funds that are to use to improve, to improve the quality of education for the students of our great community. Why wouldn't the school department release the budget and the budget summary to the public before the budget deliberations stop? This will allow the public to keep track during these meetings of where these funds are going, and this will also allow them to give their most accurate comments and input on how to use the funds when each school and topic comes up for discussion at said meeting. For example, if I want to see Dr. fee have more paraprofessionals, I can see how many are being funded in the draft budget. I can offer my opinion to that number at the citizens' input of the meeting of when Dr. fee comes up for discussion, or I can let a school committee member know my opinion, allowing for proper exchange of ideas, which would benefit the school department. This is obviously something that doesn't need explaining, and it's obviously this is something that should be fixed. Like Mr. Agia said, if we have been doing it wrong for a long time, then we shouldn't continue to do it wrong. The school department attorney said, "We are following a statutory scheme for years." What law and what statute says we can't publish the draft budget before the budget deliberation meetings? That would be a good idea if we did. And why did a member of the administration say a draft budget is not a public document? Thank you to the school department attorney for correcting that and admitting the draft budget, once it's before the school committee, is a public document. Bottom line, we must do whatever we need to be fully transparent with the community whenever we have the opportunity. I am asking the school committee right now to either take a vote to release the draft budget to be published so the public can follow along during these budget meetings and/or develop a policy mandating the school department releases the draft budget before school department budget meetings commence from now on. The public deserves full transparency and nothing less. Colin Dias.
Okay. Committee of the whole, first budget presentation for Robert El Maderos Resiliency Preparatory Academy, Ms. Brooks.
If I could just preface, I know the numbers, the enrollment numbers. There was some question last time regarding the, we had gotten two different figures. The 109 number that is on the budget cover sheet, that is, demonstrates the number that we had at the October 1st enrollment. If you recall, they lost Evolve at the end of the school year, and since then, their enrollment has grown considerably, but that's why there was a discrepancy in numbers, all right? So that is, that's all schools, their number is the number that was reported as of October 1st.
Mr. Agia?
Mr. Ponce, can you just, why did we get one that said 163 in the budget?
Because then-
Is that more current?
Yes, that was more current, and as we look on it today, they're up to 195. You know that our, their numbers fluctuate, but the 163 was when that was questioned, was the current number. The 109 is the number as of October 1st.
And 195 is the current?
Yes, as of today.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity. I appreciate it. I want to start by saying that I'm extremely proud to be the principal of the Robert El Maderos Resiliency Preparatory Academy. It's something that I have thought about for many years, becoming a principal, and I take that role very, very seriously, and I enjoy working with my staff as we move forward with additional plans for our school. Our school mission, we are a learning community that supports a student-centered classroom, and we hold that description very seriously when we say student-centered, and school that supports multi-educational options, which provide the opportunity that each individual student needs, thus reducing the dropout rate and leading those students who may not have otherwise graduated toward the path of graduation. As educators, we collaborate, and we collaborate very often, daily on a matter of fact, to search for various avenues to better serve our population through rigorous instruction, engaging content and curriculum, and holding students to high expectations that will lead them to find success. In addition, we will prepare young people for the young, for the real world through the use of multiple intervention strategies and programs that we lead, lead them towards success, both inside and outside of the classroom. We will foster a school environment where we promote family and community engagement. We will do everything we can to connect with students' families and community partners to support us with our vision that all students can be successful through multiple alternative pathways. As Superintendent Ponce just stated, we do have a regular intake of students that we have on a regular basis, as we take students from other schools and as they come into the district. Our current number is, well, it was 193. We actually had some intakes today, so I believe it's now 195, but my statistics and data reflect the 193 number as of Friday. So of the students who we have taken in, of the middle school group, we have 63.16 were taken in for disciplinary reasons, 26.31 percent were taken in for attendance reasons, and 10.53 were taken in for other reasons. Some of those other reasons include credit recovery, they're in need of a smaller class setting, or there may be some outlying reason why Resiliency Preparatory Academy was just a better fit for them. Of the high schools, of the intake for this year, 52.73 percent were taken in for disciplinary reasons, 40.92 percent were taken in for attendance reasons, and 6.35 were taken in for other reasons. So as I said, those are the percentages of students who have come to us with, for disciplinary reasons or for attendance reasons. When our students come to us, we welcome them. We are happy to have them. We look for ways to embrace them into our school, and we spend a lot of time and a lot of work on being able to do that. As you know, there, these students come to us with habits that they have had for most of their lives, and breaking habits are hard, so working with them on establishing new routines is something that we spend a lot of time on, and it's everybody's job. It's not, they don't go to a particular office to learn how to behave, or they don't see a particular person to learn how to behave. As I said before, we do a lot of work on making sure that the students know that we are working as an entire team. So I want to talk a little bit about the civic and social behavior expectations. Students at Resiliency Preparatory Academy, one, will accept responsibility for their decisions and actions, so that is one of our goals. In order to help our students meet these goals, we have put several things in place. In the middle school in particular, we have the theory of above and below the, excuse me, we have the theory of above and below the line behavior, where there is a line, literally, and we take a look at when something occurs that is something that will stress you out, you have several choices to make at that moment. Some of those choices are above the line. You can take a breath, you can ask an adult to allow you to be removed from the particular area. There's a whole list of different things that they can do. And then we have below the line behavior, and the students identified what those below the line behaviors are, such as striking out at someone, starting to curse, throwing something, et cetera. Now remember, for a number of our students, that is the type of regular behavior that they have come to us with, so we have them do reflections on what happens when you engage in that kind of behavior, and it is an extensive process. It's not something that just, we just do for a second. We really spend time with the students, looking at that, and it's a very strong movement, particularly in the middle school, we have some other things that we're doing in the high schools. So this, every single staff member refers to the students with the above and below the line behavior, not to the students, but to the actions. So what can you do that is above the line that will help you to resolve this issue? What I want to focus on there is the common language and the common actions of the teachers. So every single teacher is taking a role in this. It's something that all of them are a part of, and it's a language that the students are used to. Again, I also mentioned that we do a lot of work on reflections and having students trace where they are right now in the situation and what were the steps that brought them there, and at what point they could have done something differently. So it's a whole thought process that we work with on the students, and because all of the teachers are involved, the students know the whole school is in on it, okay? So another goal of ours is to articulate personal goals and establish priorities for learning. So we, every single report card, progress report and report card, when it comes time, every single student in the school meets with the vice principal of their area, the guidance counselor, the behavior therapist, the secretary, we all meet together, you know, in a circle, and we go over the progress report. Many of our students have said to us that this is the first time that an adult really looked carefully at their progress report or their high school, or their report card. So this is something that we have in place that it's a regular routine. So they come to us saying, when we, well, you wait and see, when I get my progress report this time, you're going to see that it's this now instead of that, because they know it's a routine. The entire school is in on it, every single person, and that's something that we work very, very hard for. And we also work with the students on making sure that each of them know exactly where they are in their credits, because some students believe that if they've been in a building for two years, that they're automatically a sophomore, but what they don't realize is the credit accumulation. So we do a lot of work in making sure students know exactly what they have to do in order to be successful in ninth grade, 10th grade, 11th, 12th, et cetera. So if you ever were to come to my school, you'd see that any student, you could stop any student, they'll be able to tell you, "This is where I am in my credits. I know now." And now I've been able to create some SMART goals, and so we have another goal there with, in terms of the personal goals and establishing priorities, each of the students have created, are now, we're actually working on it, creating SMART goals for themselves. So academic SMART goals and some goals in other areas, and this is a movement that we're doing throughout the entire school. So if you were, it's the language of the school, so if you were to stop at the school, students will be able to tell you, "This is my goal in this area, this is my goal in that, in that area." They talk with their teachers about it. They have set goals with some of their teachers in their classrooms, and they're based on what are the kind of specific behaviors that they need to engage in in order to be more successful. And this is one of the things that we're working on to also help improve attendance. We also recognize them for achievements in the areas where they are making goals, their goals come true, and they're setting goals in academic improvement, character goals, civic engagement, and leadership. And we don't just give it a name, we give indicators and descriptors so that students are aware of, these are the kinds of things that we're talking about, these are the specific kinds of actions, these are the particular kind of language that we are referring to. So you'll see that the social and emotional needs of the students is something that the entire school addresses. So as you've heard me say before, we communicate often so that we can all be on the same page in making sure that the students know what are expected of them. Another goal is understanding career options and the academic requirements needed for employment and economic independence, and also understanding and demonstrating an acceptance of cultural and individual diversity and exhibiting a respect for all. We have every Wednesday where we focus with the students on different opportunities. We call it culture at Resiliency Preparatory Academy, or for short, COTA, and that's when we have an opportunity to build a culture that defines elements that we want the students to strive for. Some of the things that we have been able to work on is having professionals come to the school, and they will meet with different grade bands of students, telling them about different, showing them opportunities in different work areas. We've had one of the members of, who's currently now a school board member, come and speak with our students. We've also had attorneys, we've had entrepreneurs come, and the students have followed up with them, some of them have even been able to get jobs there. So what they come to us and find is a place where their interests and their needs are recognized and addressed, and where we have structures in place that lets you know, this is what we stand for, but most importantly, this is what we expect of you. So we put a great deal of work and effort into that. We also have had opportunities for the, Fall River PD gang unit came to visit, not because of a gang issue, but because we wanted them to see opportunities of when you meet someone who is the man in blue, so to speak, that person is not necessarily your enemy, this is someone who works with you. They brought their K-9 officer with them, and the students had an opportunity to spend a lot of time speaking with them and working with them. We've had members of the military come and give the students a practice ASFAB test to see what it is that they would need to do to be in the, to be in the military. They think that all you have to do is put on a uniform and you're in the military, but it's a very strenuous type of preparation that you have to do to be in there. We've had cultural types of different activities for them. We've had implicit bias workshops that were done for the students by the state troopers, and then a lot of those things end with them having an opportunity to speak with those people informally. As I said, we like to make sure that our students know that when they come to us, they are embraced. Last December, a number of the, some of you and some of the district personnel were able to come and see, it was an absolutely beautiful day. If you weren't able to come, you really missed something, and I hope that you'll be able to come at another time. But we made sure that every single one of our students were given a beautifully wrapped holiday present. The teachers wrapped them themselves. We were able to, we worked with the community, one of the churches nearby gave a donation, a very nice donation, and we had raised funds. All of the students were given a beautiful RPA blanket, which was really very, very good quality, with the school logo on it. They were wrapped beautifully by the teachers. We had lunch for the, for the teachers. The state troopers came in with their Santa hats, and the, the students were, they had a door decorating contest. Now, why do we do those things? We do those things to bring cheer to the students, we bring those, we do those things to make sure that every single one of our students has something that is, that shows care during the holiday season, and at many times throughout. So, and when students come to our school, they'd come with a lot of concerns, so to speak. I was going to say baggage, but I want to use a different type of term. They come with a lot of concerns, so we try to address those things and create a very loving atmosphere. So those are some of our, that's our school mission and many of our behavior expectations, and we will continue to do work on that. Some other statistics from my school, oh, in addition, I would like to say that these are some of the things that we're working on for attendance. So there are the traditional things that we do for attendance, such as the attendance officer. We call homes frequently, we call every single day. We go to students' houses. Our attendance officers regularly go to students' houses practically daily, if not, if not four times a week. We, you know, every single time a student comes in, we try desperately to encourage them, to let them know what types of things are coming. So there are some restraints that we have with that, but I will be focusing on that in just a minute. Attendance is a great priority to us, and so we work our best to not only do the required things that are there for attendance, but to create an atmosphere where the students know that they are greatly appreciated and that we want them there. Another thing that I have started recently is calling students for good things, excuse me, calling students' homes for good things. Just this morning, a parent was crying over the phone, and she was crying, why? Because I called her, I called her to let her know how her son was doing so well in the past few weeks. She started crying over the phone, and I said, "Why are you crying?" She said, "Because it's the first phone call that she's gotten in over five years for something positive about her son." So that is something that we are doing regularly, calling for good reasons that are earned and specific. I would like to also just follow up with what we, oh yes, the other statistics for our school, we have, as you know, 193 students as of Friday. Seventy-eight are middle and 115 are high school students. In terms of the L population, we have 12, 12 English language learners in the middle school, which is 15.4 percent of the middle school. We have a total of 115 high school students, with 21 students being English language learners, and that's 18.3 percent of the high school population. In terms of special education, we have a total of 44 percent of our students in our school are special education students. So 136 percent in high school and 55 percent in the middle school. So we work very hard, I say that, why? Because we are, we do have difficulty with, you know, hiring and finding the teachers, but what we do is we make sure that the teachers who are there are getting training in strategies that work very well with ELL students and with special ed students. So rather than leaving it to one person, we know that these are strategies that have to be done regularly throughout the course of the student's work during the day. So we're not going to wait until they get to a particular class period, and then they'll get everything there, and we do everything the way we did before when they're in the regular classes. So this is something that we work on a great deal, and I appreciate the help of Fernanda very much, she's been very helpful, she was at my school today, and also Drew, who's been also very, very helpful, and Mr. Michael Loesch with that. I would like to talk with you about the budget proposal for my school. I believe you all have a copy. At the top, you'll see some of the things for teacher positions, and then I will talk about requests for the intake center. You'll see at the top that we currently have two sub-separate classrooms in the school, one from grade, that covers grades seven to nine, and one that covers grades 10 to 12. We are moving towards having three sub-separate classes in the school. So one will be grades seven to eight, grade seven and eight, one will be grades nine and 10, and one will be grades 11 and 12, and that will allow for a smaller grade span of the learning, rather than have the teacher having to prepare for three, you know, different grade levels. It helps for them to target in more on this, a smaller number of grades, and it also helps a great deal because there is a difference between a seventh grader and a ninth grader. And there's a difference between a 10th grader and a 12th grader, and certain things that they need even emotionally. So this will help us to be more targeted with our works, with our work with the students. So those are the first three at the top. We'll have to hire an additional paraprofessional, so we're asking for additional line in that. We have two, there's, currently, we are budgeted for two, one for the current seven to nine and one for the current 10 to 12, but with the additional sub-separate class, we will need an additional paraprofessional for a self-contained class. We are also, we have currently in our budget a 1.5 for an ESL teacher, and in order to do the work that we need to do and address the needs of all of our students, we're asking for additional 0.5 so that we can have two ESL teachers in the school. A new teacher leader, and preferably in the area of STEM, because we have someone, we have a director of instruction who really covers English and history, so this will allow us to really zone in on our math and science classes. And a social studies teacher. At the high school level, we currently have two English, two math, but we do not have, we only have one history teacher, so that would be an additional social studies teacher for that area. And we are looking at working on our intake center. I told you a great deal of things that we're working on for, to welcome our students into the school and to embrace them into the school, but the fact of the matter is, is when a student comes to Resiliency Preparatory Academy, very often, they will have intake in the intake office on a particular day, on a day, and then the very next day, they're in the classrooms. So the work that we do to embrace them and to welcome them and to set certain structures with them and to let them know what is expected, has to be done as they are already current students in the regular classrooms and moving forward from there, which makes it a little bit harder. So we are looking at how we can improve our intake center and expand it so that there's actually a period of time that they're doing very structured and strategic work for the whole day, for, for a period of time, perhaps one to two weeks, before being placed in the classrooms. So we're going to need to do some expansion there in order to make that happen, and for that reason, we are asking, we currently have a guidance counselor who's doing that part-time. He is in the middle school as a guidance counselor for half of the day, and he's in intake for the other half of the day. So as I said, it limits us in terms of what kind of work we really want to do with students during the intake process, because there really is a lot of work to do in the intake process. We have to consider things such as, has this student had altercations with other students? Other students who may currently be in our school or other students who are coming in in intake, and that has to, that has an impact on how we schedule them, because if it's something that was really very, very serious, we have to look at how we're, what their schedules are and how we're putting them together, and that takes a lot of time and a lot of work and a lot of digging into information. We have to wonder, was this student part of an altercation with another student that is currently going to our school? Or we also have to go through what outside community and support service services is working with the students, because we have to connect with them and work with them on a regular basis, and what are the learning needs of the students? So it's not just a question of, the student is taken in on a Monday and bam, we should put them in class on a Tuesday. There's a lot of digging and work that we have to do to make sure that the transition is smooth and that is transition that is fair to the students and is, and causes as little disruption as possible. So some of the positions that we are asking to have in the intake center is a guidance counselor full-time, which would be a full position, and it's a new position, a community facilitator, and a office, paraprofessional, so that that person can take, there's a lot of paperwork that happens with the intake center, you would be surprised. Each student comes with a folder of their entire, their entire school career, plus a lot of documents from outside services that they're working, we keep working with, we keep a lot of statistics on students, a lot of data, a lot of things. So we need, we want very much for the, the people who are doing the community facilitating, the guidance work, the family support work, to not have to focus on the paper as much and that, that type of work. So working with the guidance counselor, what kind of things would the guidance counselor be focused on, and why would that be something that would be beneficial? Well, the rationale is that Resiliency Preparatory Academy has a rolling intake that occurs throughout the school year. We're never finished with the first week of school. The first week of school goes from September to the end of the school year, so we're very unique that way. All students, and if we have someone there who is specific to that job, rather than giving someone only a 0.5, which is what we have now, is all students can go through a comprehensive orientation into the school, a comprehensive transition, not Monday you were here and Tuesday you were there, but we can take the time, as I said, depending upon the needs of the students, a week to two, to really do a lot of strategic work with the students to get them prepared. We can provide wraparound supports that can be individualized to the students and their families based on their needs. The intake center can provide comprehensive supports to students during the extended intake period and throughout the first trimester of their entry. So during that period of time, when they're still working with the intake center exclusively, they will be getting work in English, where we have an English, you know, the English teacher come and work with them on the type of writing that we would expect to see in the class, the type of work that you're going to have to do in English class, how you have to work. So they will be getting content work in during that period of time also, but they'll also be getting intense work with a lot of the needs that they have, working through routines, creating goals for themselves, things that doesn't just plop them into a class the very next day, but that we can actually work with them on and acclimate them into the, into RPA with properly, so they feel much more welcomed. And then that, that intake center can travel, sort of travel with them throughout their first trimester, see how they are really acclimating into the school. We can discover and address underlying reasons for behaviors or choices that did not allow them to be successful in their previous setting. in their previous setting. And so we could start to target that right away. And it will allow extended support time that we can give to families when they come in. Because families have a great deal of questions and they need a lot of work to do with us as well to go through routines as well. And that will allow us that time. The job description for it is actually working with, that position works with all of the schools in our district, all of the middle and high schools in our district. Because they have to regularly get information from them, that, as I said, the information is rolling on an ongoing basis. And then we also work with the local charter schools, the parent center, the neighboring school districts, et cetera. So that's something that they will have to regularly be working with and having conversations with, with those different schools and entities. This, this position also coordinates with the family support specialist duties. They are a liaison to all of the other schools and the families of the students. They work with, they would be working with DCF. We have many DCF cases that are already ongoing when the students come to us and some that come up in the course of the school year. So they would be working with them a great deal. And they'd be working a lot with the parent center and also with Durfee's registrar's office. Having this position is something that, we need someone who is already, has the baseline of being a student advocate, of supporting social, emotional learning and academic growth and helping students set goals. Short goals and long-term goals. So we need someone who really comes with that base of the academics and the support as well. And the guidance counselor has the skill set to coordinate and collaborate with school principals, DCF workers, family advocates, et cetera, as I said before. The community facilitator, which is a new position, I know there's been some discussion on that, but we want to expand the work that we do in the community and the opportunities for students. So that means, you know, in addition to working with the families, also working with support areas outside that give our students different support. We currently have some, we work very much with recreation. We work with community engagement center that we have in our school. And so there's a lot of follow-up work that needs to be done there. And also making connections for the students in terms of career to, school to career work that we want to move our students towards as well. And I spoke to you before about having the office paraprofessional to help with organization and other areas. We know that we have a lot more work to do. We are already working on a number of things for next year, which we've discussed with Superintendent Ponce and other members of the district office. We are working on reviewing the schedule that we have for students and making sure that it is truly a student-centered schedule and something that the, that really addresses many of the needs that our students have. Looking at when they have a break time during the day, looking at how many classes, academic classes they go to in a row before they are able to do some other type of movement or organize strategic types of movement in the school. And we will be coming back to address you at another time at a subcommittee meeting, and I'm very, very excited about that. The members of the school are very excited about, you know, being part of it and even students and parents as well. So that is something that I look forward to. So I welcome any feedback or questions that you have now, and I want to thank each of you very, very much for this time. I love my school and I'm happy to work with the district office and the school committee to help move our school forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brooks. That was a very comprehensive report. Any questions at this time? Ms. Larve?
Hi, Principal Brooks. Thank you for being here tonight. Well, it sounds like you have the culture of the school where your vision is leading to. I'm excited to hear about your vision about the intake aspect because I think that school, out of all our schools in the district, that aspect is very, very important. I like where your vision is going. I like the importance that you're putting on it. I would love to come in and see where it goes. But what I'd like to know is, how are you managing that right now if you're asking for these positions now to assist with that? How are you managing it with the vision that you have for this intake?
We make it happen. That, I know that sounds really simple, but we make it happen. We communicate often and people are doing a lot more than what their job description says. Myself, we are, when we have an intake, we have as many of us there as we possibly can. The guidance counselors are there, the Saks are there, the, if a teacher has a free period then, and we don't, you know, overwhelm the child, but we'll come in at different points. And the point of that is to make sure that they know that they're welcomed here. "Oh, you're going to be in my English class." So this is one of the things that we're working on right now. And, "Do you like English?" And, or if it's a math teacher who could be there at that time, we do that. So we try to set the tone the second that the child, we do our best in setting the tone as early as a child gets in. And I want to tell you, we have teachers who were giving gifts to the students. Every single child's going to leave with a holiday present. I'll help with the wrapping. So what did we do? We did not ask them, but they were there during their, whatever free period to help with the wrapping. Whatever it is, those are just some simple things that I mentioned. It's, it is a feeling of, we are all in this and we, we just make it happen. We just do it. You know, we just throw ourselves into it and we just know that it's going to make a difference to the child.
Right. Are the students buying into this? Are they feeling the?
Oh, yes. They, oh, yes. They are, first of all, for things that we have already done, they're like, what's happening this week with it? And I just want to say one thing, we don't put this work in place of instruction. I mean, we really do a lot of work on instruction. I felt that was taking a lot of time, so I cut some things out. But I shouldn't have, I cut things out that I figured you figured are already happening. There, we're doing a lot of work in writing across the curriculum, what kind of writing we're expecting teachers to have and, as I said, to require students to do. And as I said, that's not left to one classroom. We don't expect them to learn writing only in English. What we learn in the professional learning that was led by our director of instruction, we expect to see that kind of work throughout the entire school day in their science classroom and history classroom, et cetera, because we're all in on it. So we're doing a lot of work with instruction with the Open Sci Ed, with Carnegie Math that comes into our classrooms regularly. So I just want to say that there as well because I didn't speak about that, you know, before. But I want you to know that is paramount. But back to this, yeah, we just, students, teachers volunteer all of the time. The students get very excited about it. The best thing I could say is, and I said this before, but I want to stress it again, is that there's all one language throughout the school. Wednesdays is, you know, COTA day, you know, Culture of the Academy, Culture at Resiliency Preparatory Academy. And they know that they're going to be introduced to someone who has a career that they might be interested in. They know that they're going to be engaged in something that they may not have been engaged in before. And they know. So yes, very, very much so the students buy into it and they like it. And they are a part also of planning the new schedule. They have been a significant part of it. When I told you that we meet with every single student when they get their report card or their progress report, we also ask them, what kind of things do you like about the way things are running? What would you like differently? And then we also ask them, what makes things difficult for you? And what things, you know, work best for you? And that was the basis for the schedule that we will be presenting to you at another time. So the students have a very strong voice in it. I'm looking forward to having more student leadership. That's an area that we want to grow as well. Because they talk about things, we want to teach them how to make change. So we're working with them on that. But yeah, they have a voice, very, very strong voice.
It was great hearing from you. Good luck.
I appreciate that.
Keep on trucking along. Those kids, RPA kids have a special place in my heart. And I hope to get there soon.
I welcome you.
Mr. Bailey?
Hey, Ms. Brooks. First off, I just want to commend you guys. I've been, you know, been to the school a few times, been to the talk.
Yes, I appreciate that.
Some of the work you guys do, a lot of the teachers there that I've met with, they're extremely passionate. As you know, I work with a lot of your kids in the community, whether they're doing youth outreach, you know, doing voluntary programming and stuff like that. I just had a few questions. For one, I mean, you kind of mentioned that you're going to roll out a new schedule because I was going to ask you what schedule. Because one of my biggest things is just making sure if the kids jump from another school to RPA, making sure they're actually integrated into the program. A lot of the kids that I work with, when they're going to RPA from a different school, it's always a fear of going to RPA. It's not, has nothing to do with, you know, the teachers there in a setting, but it's a new setting. If you're in your junior year of high school, it would be no different if I moved with my family to a new high school. You know, I would have to deal with that. But correct me if I'm wrong, did you say sixty-three percent of the kids are there for behavioral stuff and seventeen there for attendance or something like that?
In the middle, in the middle school, sixty-three point sixteen percent of those who are, who did intake came for disciplinary reasons.
Okay.
Twenty-six point three one percent for attendance reasons and ten point fifty-three percent for other reasons. In the high school, fifty-two, fifty-two point seventy-three percent came for disciplinary reasons, forty point ninety-two percent for attendance and six point three five percent for other reasons.
Okay. The reason, the reason why I ask that is because, like I said, a lot of the kids that I work with, you know, I've been working with more kids as I, you know, came back, have always, the question is always, hey, I'm at RPA and that's why I asked about the new schedule. And it's always a question around going back to the, to the settings that they were at.
Mm-hmm.
What, do you know what percentage of the kids return to, like, settings like if a kid were to go from any middle school or high school back? There's a few kids that I'm working with now. The reason why I ask that is just, these are things I like to relate to kids when I'm working with them, especially in the community. Like I said, the bigger thing is them either integrating into your system or being able to return to environments where they feel comfortable. So.
So is, is the, I want to make sure I understand the question. Is it, do I know how many return to the other students?
Yeah. Or is that a possibility, that kids return after?
Yes. Okay. There is certain, there have been a few cases where they have returned. But I will tell you that the, that when we speak with students, the majority of them, and I welcome you to come and ask them yourselves, say they don't want to return. They really like the atmosphere here. And that, you know, every single week, we are told that. The parents feel that way, the students feel that way. And I think it's because, we do a lot of work in making sure that the students know we want you. And I'm sure that other schools do as well. But perhaps there was some, something that they needed that was just different from traditional. And so we do look, you know, away, move away sometimes from traditional and to alternative, you know, alternative approaches. We know, I know that there are four or five students in a grade who, in between classes, they need to move. They need to have movement. And so I, I do it often myself. And it's an opportunity for me to talk with them. I will take literally just two minutes and walk with them sometimes around the hall. Not every principal can do that, you know, in a huge school where you have so many more students. But I know that, and then they are refreshed by that. I return them to class and then it's a whole different story. They're not, you know, their different diagnosis or needs, whatever, have been addressed there. I've worked in large schools where I was an assistant principal in school with over three thousand students. You can't do that kind of thing everywhere.
Yeah.
But that's just one small example. We know every student, single student's names. We know. So there's just, just a feeling that this is the place for me. And they express this. And very often, they choose, "I don't want to go anywhere else. I want to stay here." So I do agree with you. I think, I think I heard you say, and correct me if I'm wrong, that sometimes students come with, you know, stress, you know, for whatever reasons, concerns, like, oh, I'm going to this school. It is very soon assuaged. And I know that with other things that we're looking to put in place for next year, we'll be able to target that even, even more quickly and even more efficiently. We're not where we want to be yet, but I think that we've made a lot of goals in this, in this short time. And I do thank you for the time that you've come to the school and spoken with the students and you got to hear from them yourself. That, that's very important to me. I appreciate that.
Yeah. I just, like I said, I just, I just wanted to answer, have those questions answered. But you guys do great work. I've been there. Like you said, I've came and talked. The teachers are excited. You continuously bring people in from the community to meet with them, different organizations, to show them different career paths, keep up the great work. And like I said, I work, I work with a ton of kids in the community. And if I can ever be of help, that's all that.
Thank you. I really appreciate that. Thank you. And thank you for the visits that you've made and talking with the students. I appreciate it.
Thanks. That I yield.
Thank you.
Mr. Agia?
Hello. So can you just define what you're calling middle school and high school? Is it middle school seven, eight, and nine?
Yes, sir. We do. But I know that's usually seven and eight. But for the purposes of the school, it is seven, eight, and nine for middle, ten, eleven, and twelve for high school.
So just looking at numbers, budget and the stuff that's here. So you have eighty middle school students or eighty students seven, eight, and nine. And when you say you divide your counselor, I'm assuming that means seven, eight, nine.
Yes.
Like you're talking the same language when you, when you divide it up.
Yes, correct. Seven, eight, nine. Yes.
And then you, if you put fifty percent on the sheet here, it talks about the position is split fifty percent. But what I'm having a hard time is just trying to, I don't see enough students in here. I'm not being overly critical.
That's okay.
I've worked there before. I have a background in some of this. That, I don't see the numbers as high as that person's going to be active. I know today you said about a week they'll be working, which is different than what, it's just an intake center.
Yes.
But where I'm coming from, why I said I wasn't in favor of that particular position, is that I think we have to look at utilization of resources. And it doesn't mean you don't need a person in there. Or I know that over the years, it's been split up so that the, like if I was the seven, eight, and nine and she was the ten, eleven, and twelve, at the intake, I'd be the, if I'm seven, eight, and nine, I would be the one doing that intake because I'm going to be working with that family throughout. So I would glean a lot of solid information rather than having a third party, you know, glean that. So I'm not convinced that personally, that that's a, as far as the budget goes, that that's a position that I would support.
Well, one thing that I will say to address that, thank you very much. I appreciate that, is a couple of things. The other guidance counselor for the high school is always in on the intake as well to meet the family as well. So the guidance counselor who would be for grade seven, eight, and nine, who is currently the one who's split between the two, he would be there for the immediate intake and the immediate information that he has to get as well. So that wouldn't stop. However, looking at numbers at Resiliency Preparatory Academy is, I would have to say is different than looking at, at another school. I know that the number of students that we have is smaller. But I will say that almost a hundred percent of the students that are there are extremely high need, which is why they are there. So you have someone who's working with about a hundred students. It's the amount of needs that the students have, there's so much work to be done. As you know, because you've worked there and because you're familiar with the school very much and everybody else is familiar with how RPA does intake, that was the highest need at the school where they came from. So they, the amount of attention that they need and work that they need, it may be one child, but the amount of time spent with them may be, I'm just pulling a number for an example, may be about, about the amount of time that you'd spend with the five or seven students. Because it is so much work. And we are working with the families, you know, as well, a number of things. So the guidance counselors are very, very, very busy. And it's, you know, the way that it works is very busy. And the vision that we have for the intake center, it would be a very high demanding job. Lots of work to be done.
Did you close or has the People Inc. Family Center, Tutoring Center closed?
Oh, no, it's not closed. It's still there.
So that, they get, provide tutoring and somebody's got to manage that?
Yes, they do. Yes. And they go into the classroom as well. So it's, yes.
The, when you look at, they said one oh nine was the October first enrollment? Do you know what it was in September when you first opened the doors?
It was close to one hundred. It was close to one hundred. I don't, I don't want to quote the exact number. It was close to one hundred at that time. Maybe it was one oh nine. It was, I don't remember exactly off the top of my head.
Yeah. It just seems, we've had some alternative meetings and we've talked a little bit about the numbers and how easy or difficult it is to transfer students or whatever to that. But when I'm looking at the number, it doesn't seem, over the month since October one, like I'd be curious if, maybe you could send it to the superintendent about, what has the intake looked like throughout the year? So September, October, November? Because you probably lost some students along the way too, I'm guessing. But that would be just, I'm curious about that.
So would you like me to send to Superintendent Ponce the numbers per month of?
Please, yeah. I think that would help us to at least see what, what it's looked like as we've gone through.
Okay.
When I look at the top couple of lines about the teachers, it makes it look like you're asking for three like you're asking for three teachers, and I don't think that's accurate. So, what I would only, I'm trying to, like, support you on this, that if you need a third self-contained class in one para, that's all you need. When we look at us, the sheet that looks like this, that shows you what you're asking for, it makes it look like you're, you have to read through to, to get to the idea that you're not, so I don't think you're asking for too much, uh,
Right.
as far as the benefit, uh, there.
Yeah, so what we wrote there was for, the first was actually a conversion. If you see there, and the, the seven and eight is a conversion, so techn, right now there's seven, eight, and nine, so it would be converting to seven and eight. Uh, you see in, in the, the third row there, the eleventh and twelve is a conversion, because before it was ten through twelve?
No, I, I, I get it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
What I'm just saying is that technically, that's not a conversion on this for the school committee budget, so you have a self-contained class. If you felt it needs to be seven, eight, and nine, that's seven, eight, and nine. So, that sort of already existed in the current budget.
Okay.
So, I'm looking at it as a new request, and making it look like, how many positions are you asking for in the budget? I wouldn't, those conversions, I wouldn't count personally, because
Okay.
they're already working. And if you have a classroom, you need a, a para professional to join them, so that's, they go together.
Right.
So, I think that makes a lot of sense.
Okay.
When you say the social studies, uh, position, an additional social studies position, and I'm not sure how the numbers bear out, this might be something that you need to get to the superintendent as well, but, um, why would you not get a science teacher, with, along with that? If logically, we, you're looking for more than one, so you only have one of the social studies, so now we're going to add a second social studies, I'm not sure.
Last year, they added, added a STEM teacher, so they have a science and a STEM, and then the social studies, they have one social studies.
Is that the vacant, you have a vacancy? Did I see that in the budget, vacant?
Yes.
So, how have you made it without the?
We have, um, we have a instructional support person who has been working with the students in there, and the science teacher has been working with them and, and, and helping us that way. And the students have actually been enjoying it a great deal. We do use some of the work that is online, and they do projects based around that.
So, that's a sub the whole year?
Yes.
Yeah. I know you hope to find the STEM teacher, but
Yes.
it might make sense if you can't find one, and you have a science teacher that you could find, you know? We, other people ask the same thing, like, we have a position that's basically vacant, so the children didn't get a service out of that eighty thousand dollars or whatever as you go. But the numbers should bear these out as we look at them, to say this makes sense. The other thing, I think, just for the edification of the committee too, we have to look at the, um, you have a needy population, I get it, the reason why we fought so hard in the past to get additional positions, like the field coordinator, the family support specialist, the ISL, was due to that stuff. So, coming in, you had some of the things that other people didn't. So, when I look at the community facilitator, which I think is a position that some places had none, uh, the way that I see it, you've been one of the only places that have actually had a family support specialist that other people didn't. So, I just raise that as, um, looking at equity numbers, I, I think we need to have this school with the amount of resources and the needs that are in the other schools. This school needs to help the other schools take some of the burden off of them for the, um, children that have a difficult time.
Mm-huh.
So, I'm not being overly critical, I think, I look at the attendance, it's not good, I don't think you'd even say that it's good.
Mm-huh, yeah, you're correct.
But, we got to do something with it, like, we have to, there's so many needs, but, and I appreciate everything you said, but we have to see it bear out, that this is what's happening, uh, in a positive way.
Mm-huh.
Madam Superintendent, I talk about the behavior therapist as we, you know, to put on these sheets so that we know exactly what we have and what we don't have. So, I consider those as sort of an SCL type of, uh, position, two adjustment counselors, two guidance counselors, a hundred and ninety students. To your point before, about your children are needier than the other schools, this caseload that we have here is way below what the other schools have
Mm-huh.
as well, so I'm just trying to, like, balance it out when, when we determine a budget. So, um, I do think it sounds like you're doing a lot, I will try my best to get a day out of work where I can go down to visit, um, but unfortunately, I work during the day at this, in a, in a school, so it's hard to do, but, uh, I will take you up on the offer to try to get there at some point this year. With that, I yield, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Agia. Uh, Ms. Rogics?
Hi, Ms. Brooks, we haven't met yet, but I, I also want to come and visit. I have a little bit more flexibility than Mr. Agia does, so I can run down whenever I feel like it. Um, question about attendance, do we have a sense of, is it more of the younger grades that are having more issues with attendance, or is it more of the upper grades?
It's more the upper grades.
The upper grades. Do we have a sense of what's the barrier to getting the older kids in?
There's a, there's a few things, and we have discussed that. Some students who, when they were, did intake, they never, like, even came
Okay.
to the school. So, we do the outreach, the attendance officer goes to the school, goes to the house, we call, we, you know, to get them to even come in. There are some students on the roster who I have not met yet.
Okay.
That, you know, and so they have just never even came in, so they were absent all of the time from the school that they came from, and that has carried here, and I have not even had a chance to meet them, so that they can come in and see some of the work that we are doing. We are, we go to the houses all of the time, we call, we do every single
Oh, I believe that.
So, so there is a little bit of that. And then there are some that the habits are hard to break, you know, when they come in, and, um, we are, we continuously work on that with them, and, um, and I would say that that is, is basically what it is.
Okay.
We want to, um, we want to really take a look, as I said before, at that intake when they come in, and not a be, be that you come in on, you intake on a Monday and come in on a Tuesday, but that we build that atmosphere, that environment, that they do get that initial welcome in, and we think that that will make a huge difference to them, you know, blending into the school and, you know, in a more fluent way.
Yeah, well, you're speaking my language, because basically what you're talking about is a full, like, wraparound assessment, like, what supports does this kid need in order to be here successfully and to do well here?
Exactly.
Right, so that way we can get them to continue
Exactly.
to come through the door. Um, so that makes sense to me. Do, oh, my question just, I just lost my question. It's gone.
There it goes.
There it goes.
Can I ask one clarifying?
I got it.
Yes.
Sorry, uh, perfect timing. Uh, Madam Superintendent, the attendance that Ms. Brooks talked about, if a student comes to her with a bunch of absences, they stay with the other school, correct?
The, the absences, yes.
Yeah, with the ascending school, so if I look at this number of ninety percent, um, chronically absent, it's, that's strictly for the student at, since the start of the school year? I'm assuming that's how it gets carried in? Do you disaggregate that to, to know what your, like, you know, I, I was absent forty days before I came to you, but since I come to you, I'm absent once. Do you have any data that indicates, like, once you get involved, uh, is it better, is it worse?
Um, I don't have that disaggregated data with me, that is something that I can get to Superintendent Ponce, and, and, and I can get that to her tomorrow morning.
Yeah, because I think when, that number on that sheet that pops in, that's what pops in automatically from the state, I believe, and it would probably carry over from both, for those children, but truth in advertising, I'd rather, you know, you give us what you've been able to do with them, and it's not like you're going to turn a miracle in one, one week, but I think if, everything you're saying is happening, they should be there more often, they should be, I'll yield back to Ms. Rogics, I just wanted to clarify, hopefully she found the way.
I got it back, I got it back. Um, just for my own clarification, what would, what is the difference between the community support facilitator, community, I can't think of the name of it.
Family support specialist.
The family support specialist and the community facility, facilitator position that we're talking about?
Yes, that, well, it's, it's kind of like, right in the, in the name, the family support will really be working a lot with the families, um, there's a lot of, um, communication that we have to do with the families. And I want to build, as I said before, I want to build positive communications with them also. I want to move towards workshops with the families, I want to move towards, um, um, like, um, parent meetings and, and that sort of work, which is not where it should be right now, and I want someone to really take, you know, the organization ownership of that. So, that is where it would be doing a lot of work with the community facilitator, they'll be doing a lot of work with the school to career work that the students are going to be doing, um, internships in the community that we want to do, service in the community, I want to get students out into the community, so I want the person to be an organizer for that part.
Okay, so that just sounds different than how we would use a community, community facilitator in, in other schools, so again, that just goes back to what that description looks like?
Right, right. We are actually in the process of revising and defining and having a common definition of what that position should look like across the district.
Okay, I'm not opposed to either, I'm just wondering what the differences would look like, and that's it. Um, I yield.
Ms. Agia? Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, uh, Ms. Perera hasn't had a chance yet.
Thank you. Thank you, Principal Brooks, it's nice to meet you, I look forward to visiting the school as well.
Please do.
Um, these, this group, this population of youth is what I've spent most of my career working with, so I applaud your work.
Thank you.
Um, quick, a couple of quick questions, um, relating to that, that guidance position. Obviously, we know that having a good transition for these students who often are coming from homes or situations that are not always, um, stable, that it's important in order to increase the likelihood of them being successful. So, I appreciate that. How many students, just an educated guess, at, um, at your school, would you say are receiving outside services due to emotional or behavioral or, or social needs?
Oh, boy, maybe fifty percent or more.
Okay, that's what I would, that's what I would guess. Um, in this guidance position, besides intake, would they be responsible for anything else? Like, let's say, dealing with attendance, or?
Yes, well, they would be getting off this, well, I, I, I believe that the whole school is dealing with attendance and responsible for attendance.
Great.
So, I, I will say that I strongly believe that. Um, they will be doing a lot of work in getting that main, that new intake group in to the building that first week to two weeks, and really engaging them and making, I mean, it's going to be a, a lot of work, it won't be just them, but they're the full organizers of it. Because I think that that is the main problem, I really do, uh, from my, um, from my, um, looking at the whole thing, I, if we don't get them in there on a very positive note, because first of all, they were, most of them were already in some kind of trouble. They, they came there because they got into some kind of trouble, whether it be due to attendance, or it's something disciplinary, and then whatever, um, theories there may be about, you know, why you come to RPA, whatever, that's something that we are working on, and, and then they're going to be told that they're going to be going into a class, a class that has been in place since September, and so they're going to be the new person in, that's a lot.
Sure.
It's a lot. And then many of them already have concerns that they're receiving outside services for, working with a psychologist with, working with a DCF caseworker, working with whatever. So, do I want to walk in at a moment when something has been going on since September and be the new kid on the block who, everybody knows I did something, it's, it's hard. So, I'm looking for ways to really have them come in that is more comfortable and embracing, and I'm also looking at, which we will, uh, share with you at a, at a later date, how we have the, um, the units broken up in a class, so that there are natural breaks in the unit, I'm not saying to say breaks, but natural perforations in the, uh, in, in the unit, so that is, so, so that units are really done more neatly, like, that could be done in two to three weeks, so that now here's a natural break for someone to come in, and they're not in the middle of the book, but they're at a start of the next portion of the unit. So, that would make a difference to the child who's coming in. Oh, yeah, we're on page a hundred and twenty in the book, so how are we going to, you know, they'll see that, and that alone is intimidating. But no, you came in today, you know, we're starting this tomorrow, so, so we're looking at the, the schedule and where we can have those natural perforations for them to come in.
So, the intake's process essentially lasts sometimes a couple of weeks? Is this a situation where the scholar is going into a classroom and then maybe being removed from all work? Because I just want the community to understand, when we think intake, it's not, when we're dealing with, you know, this population of youth, we're, we're probably not talking about just sitting down, filling out one form, and we're good to go. As, um, Mrs. Rogic stated, where you're trying to make sure we understand all the services and all the needs of this student.
Correct.
And that would require, I'm assuming, a lot more time than, say, um, you know, a typical student at one of our, our middle schools
Yes.
with less issues.
Yes, that is what we're, what we are moving towards, that's what I want to move towards.
Okay. I mean, I, I agree with the position, I think it's, it helps our students and provides them with a much greater chance of success, which is, of course, what we all want. I do, I agree with Mr. Agia when it comes to equity amongst the schools, um, however, maybe I see equity a little different in what that word means. So, to me, it means maybe me and, and Mr. Hart get tickets to go to the same standing room only concert. Some would say that was equal. I would say giving me a stepstool so that I have the same view as Mr. Hart would be equality. So, I think some of our students do need a little more to actually
Yes.
have, have equal chance of success, which is what we're looking for. Thank you so much for your time.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Anything further, uh, Mr. Agia?
Yeah, just to piggyback on that, my point on the equity piece is, if a normal school, another school has difficult cases as well, and their caseload is two hundred and fifty to one for a school adjustment counselor, and yours is sixty-five to one for an SCL person, to me, that's what I'm talking about. So, you're getting, your school's already getting by having much more services and people in place than the other schools. So, when I say equity, that's what I'm referring to, it's just straight numbers.
I understand.
Other schools have difficult cases as well, but their numbers are two fifty, three fifty to one. So, yours are down in the eighty, ninety per, which maybe you can defend that you need more, maybe you need more school adjustment counselors or the like. That's a different story than for me talking about this particular piece. What, what I think, I, I, I'm not sure what their positions are, but do you have a position that goes out at night after school, like a wraparound outreach, more different, uh, more like flex schedule, or do all the other people work traditionally up until the day, and we have to pay stipends for home visits or anything like that?
It is, um, more traditional during the day.
Yeah. What, what I think would personally make sense, and I think is what's lacking, is that everything that we do in this school system lately is all during the day,
Yeah, I agree.
and the children are home at night with, doing all kinds of things, so we need to take some of the resources that we keep on adding, we just keep on adding more resources, more resources, more resources, and the result's not there. So, I think looking at a, a position such as this, you could potentially have a support person, you could have a mental health professional, you could have people that take the kids to the, um, make sure they're at their appointments with the doctors, you can have that person also help with, you could almost get a more bang for your buck, in my opinion, by having the person work from twelve to eight versus seven to three, so that we have more wraparound services. When you look at the facilitators and the community facilitators, if we, if we create those automatically, that they're going to work from, you know, twelve o'clock to eight o'clock, we can provide that. What we, I think we're just adding, 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 because everybody's going to get one. Well, a community facilitator that works seven to three isn't going to be as successful as a attendance or community person that works after hours. We could do maybe a combination of an attendance officer addition, strictly for your school, because it's got some of the lowest attendance, that has other skills, that can do those duties, so I'm not trying to belabor the, but these are just ideas that are in my head, for I think that
No, this is good.
we should have, we, we can justify some of the spending with the low enrollment by targeting after hours, different types of things, coordination of care, as Ms. Rogic always talks about, so that we can get these kids in the frame of mind to be ready for school, after school, because when I worked there, we used to do an hour or two of home visits after hours, and they'd pay a stipend.
Mm-huh.
That's all well and good, it was some of the best time that I ever had working there, but it's only a little bit of time, it's like scratching the surface, you're knocking on the door, where are you at? I'm not giving cat to the children that way, so we need after hours things, we need credit recovery stuff that people can do at night, so that you get these kids back on track, so I'm, I don't wanna go on and on, but I think there's some value into throwing things out there.
No, this is
Let's come up with a better, if there's a better plan, let's look at it, and when I ask you about the attendance, I'm not trying to load your school up, but I believe an alternative school's mission is to also assist the other schools, so your middle school program should assist the middle schools
Sure.
to make those places, you know, better institutes of learning. And if that means you have to remove some students and put them here, so be it, the same thing at the high school. But when I'm just from the outside watching, I don't think that happened as quickly as I would have liked it this year, or even at, in June for the next year. So you start off in September, it shouldn't always be, it should be, you go there, you do what you gotta do to get, get back, so I just think, uh, I'm not trying to be critical of you or your positions or whatever, I got elected to give my opinion and that's it, but I do think you're, you and your teachers are doing a lot of hard work down there with some of the diff- most difficult kids we have, so I applaud you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it, thank you.
Okay, next up, thank you, Ms. Brooks. Next up is, uh, Mr. Damaris, Durfee High School. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone, thank you for having me. As we all know, Durfee High School, BMC Durfee High School, moved into a brand-new building this fall, a two-hundred-and-sixty-three-million-dollar gem, a, a, a crown jewel in Fall River, and, and it is an amazing place. It's a comprehensive high school, right, that means that we have students that are preparing for college, and we have students that are preparing for career. We have nine CTE programs that I can tell you are beginning to amaze everyone. Just this past weekend, fifteen students from, from our CTE programs participated in DECA for the first time at this level, and they raised a lot of eyebrows up there i- in Boston, let me tell you, with one of our students, um, scoring the tops in one of her categories. She didn't quite move on to nationals, but, but next year, you're going to see that. Talk about CT again for a second, we had three students in our visual design program place one, two, and three in a national T-shirt design contest. So when I talk about the caliber, caliber of work coming out of that program, it is top-notch. When we talk about our AP offerings, we got a call recently from Springfield Public Schools, they wanted to come down and see what it is that we're doing in our AP seminar and research program that's gaining so much success. When we talk about AP research, our passing rate on AP research for the last school year, twenty-one, exceeded national and international data at ninety percent passing qualifying scores. When we look across the school, the kids are beginning to embrace it. Let's face it, as we opened this school, we also opened it when we just returned to learn, over a thousand hilltoppers over the previous eighteen months decided remote learning was for them. So this was the first time that Durfee had its full population in, just like many schools, and, and there was an adjustment period that we're, we're all well aware of. As the year settled in and after the holidays passed, attendance improved, the climate is certainly much better. If you walk in Durfee High School now, I've had visitors come in, and they've seen that it is a different school. For me, when the mask came off on March seventh, it felt like the first day of school to me, because you could see smiles, you could begin to really make connections. As I look across our school, it doesn't look like a place that the state says is in turnaround. But the reality is we're in year three of turnaround. What that means, I don't know, because we know the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education is looking at accountability in a different way over these last couple of years and in the year forward. I don't know, no one can predict what they're going to, to, um, to do with that formula, but we're staying focused on that plan. So when you look at the goals on the face sheet for the budget, there, each section is lined up with the four turnaround practices. Leadership, instruction, intervention, and school climate. Many of the positions that we talked about in last year's budget were set up to push that work forward, to, to have, to be levers to drive instruction, to be levers to foster accountability, to foster consistency across the school, to improve our efforts at social-emotional learning and supporting students, and improve our efforts at intervention. So I will say that tremendous progress has been made. I am incredibly impressed by the work of my associate principals in terms of one focused on instruction and one focused on social-emotional learning. The instructional leadership team, and those, would that be consisted of all of my department leaders along with teacher leaders, are really looking at instruction, what can we improve, what's working, what can we spotlight for others to learn from? Embracing the professional development of UDL and the writing revolution, we're poised for something big there. We're getting traction in the planning, we're getting traction in the instruction. On the so- social-emotional side, for lack of a better term, an SLT was formed, and this is purely voluntary, but teachers across the school come together, and they're, they've organized a program of SEL in action. And over a hundred staff members have participated in the pilot, so when we talk about spreading that work across every person in the building, that is driving it. When we think about intervention, that's the biggest area of improvement, and, and we've struggled this year with implementing the wind block, and we pressed pause on that. That'll be in full force and designed when we open in the fall. In this spring, we're gonna pilot some intervention specifically targeting reading and specifically targeting our ninth and tenth graders. Also, when we look at the redesign of, of the, uh, grade level structure for freshman academy and three house offices, that has fostered a tremendous amount of consistency and collaboration between all vice principals, working really their schools within the school, each one of them, in that they have, they have their own support teams that do the work that in smaller schools would be cut across, you know, the entire school. These folks would be vice principal, leading two guidance counselors, two adjustment counselors, a student support specialist, a clerk, and, and a, a SAM, focused on the students that need it the most, right? We're doing great in other places, too, we had a very strong winter season in sports, we had two teams make it in, into the playoffs, we had individuals on track and in, uh, swimming and diving that made it to states, a lot of records broken, and I think that's testament to the, the investment that the committee has made into the sports program, and then that translates into the classroom. So it, it's really feeding itself. I'd be remiss if I didn't mention our arts program. We have several students performing and competing at the SEMSB level, and if you wanna see something special and you have time on Saturday afternoon, head over to CASE for the Massachusetts Educators Theaters Guild, uh, state drama competition, where our, our guys, our, our students are gonna be on stage at two-thirty, performing. When we look at the proposals you have in front of you, um, we wanna build on this work, we wanna build on the positivity going. I have to say out loud a, a number that maybe you haven't heard yet, okay, uh, it's something that we're really proud of. Last year's graduation rate for the class of twenty-twenty-one at Durfee was eighty-seven point nine percent, that's the highest that we've ever seen. Dropout rate was one point three percent. A big piece of that is the human work that's gone on over the last year and a half, to get students to stay in the game, to keep them connected to school. The outreach that happens, whether it's a paraprofessional, a clerk, someone sitting in an office on the phone, a teacher, an administrator. If you look at the sixteen gateway cities, we were number two in terms of graduation rate last year. Now, that can't have an asterisk next to it, right? The modified competency determination that DESI has allowed for with the class of twenty, class of twenty-twenty-one, and twenty-two, allows for schools to make sure that students are in courses aligned with the content and with the standards that are on the tests. So students that traditionally have not received a diploma because they didn't pass MCAS, have received a diploma over the last two years if they passed their coursework. We saw a doubling of the graduation rate for ELL and special education students last year, okay? This process, it will be allowed this year as well. What the next steps are, I'm not sure, but it needs to be stated out loud, because other places didn't apparently do the work that we did in making sure that students were made on the beam, that remained hopeful and connected to an adult, and they hung in there. So when we look at our student population, your October one number they have in front of you is twenty-three forty-seven. That's over a hundred fifty students more than the year prior. Right now, we're at twenty-two eighty, and that's still well over a hundred. Some of the numbers that you see in the client are referrals to RPA. We hadn't referred to a, a single student to RPA for a year and a half, other than for credit recovery. So the numbers in terms of other referrals, um, just weren't there, we didn't make any behavioral referrals. So when we look at projections for next year, we're already up students. We have students, um, in our adult learning program that are staying longer with us and staying till twenty-two. We had, we saw an influx of students, um, in our ASD program coming in from other communities, I think it was because they saw the amazing facility that we were moving into. And then the projections for next year's eighth grade are a very, very large class. So with all of that, we need more teachers, and what you have in front of you, um, is largely requests for teaching positions. When we look at the core academics, in addition to world language, PE and health, and ESL, there is a demand for an additional teacher for each of those departments. In collaboration with, with, uh, Mr. Loesch and the Special Education Central Office, the projections are that our special ed numbers are going up as well significantly next year, and there is a need for an additional ASD teacher, an additional community-based teacher, and then six additional inclusion slash sub-separate teachers. Tethered to that would be a, a need for an additional six special ed paraprofessionals. One of the things I didn't talk about a few minutes ago was our early college program. We have two certified early college programs presently, one with Bristol Community College, the other with Bridgewater State. We are in the final steps of putting the application in for a third relationship, this one with UMass Dartmouth. We'll be the first one in the state, we'll be the first high school in the state to have that, um, that designation with three separate colleges. We're projecting there'll be over four hundred students in early college coursework next year, and that's aside from dual enrollment. We've noticed, and, and, and all the data says that students can succeed in early college work. In fact, when you look at the data, um, our students are very successful in early college work, it improves their attendance, too. But they need extra support, and right now, we are providing that extra support in many different ways, and it's usually additional duties from teachers that were, were, were stipending for prep time, et cetera, and, and this really calls for an early ac- early college academic specialist, in our estimation. In addition to a, another teaching slot, we have seen great success in the student support specialist role. Okay, this is a, a certified teacher who works in conjunction with the vice principal's office. They have, uh, one class a day where they have a core group of students that they work with on skill building, both organizational academic and then SEL. Then they're able to be deployed into classrooms to observe teachers, give them recommendations for specific students, help kind of with certain groupings and make, uh, give some advice to the teachers, and then they, they, these are also frontline folks that help with, um, making sure the kids get into school regularly and, and with dropout prevention. Credit recovery is a big piece that, that comes up every year, and it's something that, uh, you know, if you look at referrals to RPA, I think we referred close to thirty-five or forty students for credit recovery, they simply weren't gonna make it this year for graduation. We're asking for an ISL focused on credit recovery, that way from day one every year, we have credit recovery built into the schedule, and we have, uh, students, um, aware of the options they can use to, to regain that credit. It doesn't have to be seat time, it can be online stuff, it can be after school, but I think the more that we can offer that, it's gonna, it's gonna improve outcomes for all students. We're also asking for an ISL for early college. In addition to what I said about the support that we found is necessary for success in early college, we also need to have people present on campus as we send students to these places. We've had, we've been remote with Bridgewater for the last few years, but I think indications are, um, health-wise, is that we'll be sending kids to Bridgewater, and it would be important to have staff up there, um, as a point of, as a point of, um, contact and support for the students. So we've added several Chapter Seventy-four programs over the last few years, one of them being marketing. Right now, we have one teacher in that program, and our students, uh, because the program isn't growing and kids are hanging in there, the students will never be able to reach the hours needed, uh, in that pathway without a second teacher, and so we're at the point, um, in year, in year three of the program, that there's a demand for an additional teacher. One of the things that to date has not happened, um, in, in an organized, ongoing, and formal way, is a co-op opportunity for our senior students in CTE, so we're asking for, for an FREA position as a co-op teacher. Ideally, this would be someone that would have certification in, in either health assisting or early childhood, that could be a point five in a program, or a point, or, or, and then the other half of the, uh, of their duties would be to set up co-op to monitor students in the field. Also in the CT realm, CTE realm, we're asking for five program leads, this is different than a lead teacher. This would be, the, these are the public-facing programs where we take in either students into, into the pre-K or in the salon, in, um, in culinary? Cosmetology, there's a lot of ordering that goes on, there's a lot of, um, who's the point person to deal with Cisco, to deal with the vendors that are, that are fixing equipment, um, and this is something that if you look across other CTE programs, these are positions that do exist. As construction, the construction craft labor program grows, um, we need more adults in that setting. We have some amazing equipment, and our guys are focused on safety and OSHA and all the standards they need to be, but another set of eyes and another set of hands by way of a paraprofessional in that program would, would go a long way. And then likewise, um, when our students go out on long, to long-term care facilities, when we're talking about the health assisting program, there's a need for another adult to be out there or, or to stay back in the classroom. So as you've noticed, last year's requests were a lot on counseling positions, on some administrative positions, and this year, we're focused on getting more resources, um, directly into the classrooms to help our students.
Thank you, Mr. Damaris, any questions? Up, Mr. Agia.
Thank you for the presentation. The, um, you had mentioned that the wind block is on pause, can you just explain that?
So the wind block, what I need, right? Part intervention, part extension. When we negotiated, uh, this into the schedule with the FREA, the language says up, implementing up to five times per week, okay? When we launched the year, we were using that time to deal with the intense traffic that was going on, right, so we put that at the front end of the day. Going back to the challenges that I talked about, and, and we're not, what, I'm not hiding that, right? We had a tough time getting kids settled into learning, to following the schedule, and, and to following directions. And the wind block is something that needs, that needs a high level of organization and a high level of buy-in to, to execute. This is modeled after something that we learned from folks over at Falmouth High School, and when we called them last year to talk more about it, they said, let's just give you this warning, we're pressing pause on our wind, uh, block for this year, and I checked with them, they're not running it this, I mean, that was last year, they're not running it this year either. Because it needs to be flexible, it needs to be, if, if I'm okay academically for that period of time, I might go and, um, extend my, my practice on guitar, or I might go to the library and, and study. So given the, the tone of the kids as they came back to school, we didn't think it was prudent to initiate it this year.
So when you said it was negotiated, just, so that went away, and then it's just the, the regular classes are just taking up the time?
So the time, yeah, the time of that was distributed in, into each period, so that all, all the classes have the same amount of time.
Who was gonna, when it was negotiated, and what exactly did that mean, that every teacher, every staff person had a duty during that time?
Everybody would be doing something, some folks would be providing intervention, some folks would be offering a, a class on how to change a tire, or, or whatever it is that, you know, might be of students' interest, um, so that it was flexible, you know, uh, for students, they wouldn't be an intervention every day, you know, they might, they might go to something that they're really interested in, they also know they need some help with reading.
Yeah, I, I appreciate and understand exactly what you're going through, my personal opinion is, when you do a, a cost-benefit analysis of that with twenty-four hundred students in a place, I'm not so, it sounds good in theory,
Mm-hmm.
but in practice, it's not even, I can only imagine how it would be to try to run, so I totally get it, and I just, that's the first I heard of it, that's why I asked.
Sure.
You had mentioned also that you had ASD students coming in from other districts, what, can you explain what that means?
What I know, what we noticed was that there were a number of families that moved out of some towns nearby, um, and into Fall River. out of some towns nearby and into Fall River that entered into our ASD program.
So they were just, they moved in, basically, that's it? It's not like they moved here for the
No.
...school only, they...
Well...
Well, yeah, I mean, I think that should be looked at, both prior to as well as now.
Sure. Well, I mean, typically, people move where they want to move, right? And that's, that's...
Yeah, as long as they move, that's what I'm saying.
Right. Yeah, it wasn't a, it was...
When we look at it, it just seemed like an odd statement that they came from other districts, but I understand what you're saying. Now, they moved to Fall River.
They moved to Fall River.
And we provide them services, so...
Sure.
It's not like they just kinda, we're in Somerset and they came over here.
Right.
They moved to Fall River and then they came to school. The, when you talk about the early college additional position, and you said he's providing stipends for teachers doing additional duties, can you just expand on that a little bit?
So some, some of the scheduling is, okay, so I got a class with Bridgewater on Monday, Wednesday, Friday, but not Tuesday, Thursday, and it happens during period four or five. Or, there's a co-teaching aspect with the professor at the college and a teacher on campus. So there are different combinations of need, but with the number of students we're talking about, it's like, okay, we'll just go to the cafeteria or go to the library. If we keep the kids in a controlled academic setting on the days in between their college courses, it's a check-in on how the students are doing, making sure they're organized, the teacher knows the syllabus so they know where they are in the curriculum, and making sure that the kids are on track.
And currently, you said by stipend, so that you must have a number at some point that you could get.
Sure, sure.
So, I think, I do want to have a meeting to talk about early college, because I'm, every time I say it, I'm a little confused still, but we can have one to drill down some of those things. But it sounds like you just need coverage is the real issue.
Well, coverage and the capacity to give the support, too.
Yep. You talked about the student support specialist being very successful, and what I would ask is if you could get us something that indicates what that means. So what does it look like for a student support specialist? I know a little bit about it. I think I was one of the proponents of adding that to one of the other houses in the past, and then theoretically, if it's working, we should add it to all. But I think maybe one page or a paragraph on that might help us to understand, you know, what that means. The CTE seems like you have the numbers to match up with what you're asking for, so I don't think it's a pie in the sky. I think your numbers are actually indicating what this is. Is that accurate?
Share what you told me a while ago about the program for next year.
So, for next year, I was looking at our discovery kids who are currently rotating and exploring all the different programs. And at this point, we have four hundred and seventy-four kids who have reported what their first, second, or third choice would be, or if they're not interested in CTE at all. And at this point, we have seventeen students who are not interested in CTE.
So you'll have the need for additional, this resource is gonna be...
Of about seventy-five more staff.
The co-op coordinator you indicated, I don't see, I think you said it was, you're looking at it as like a point five or point something, and then...
To get us started.
Yeah. As I was reading it, one of the things I was saying is, what are they gonna do if there's not the numbers for that? And then when you indicated point five, I think that would be important to put on, I don't, maybe I missed it, but it's not from scratch. I think you're asking for a staff member that's gonna do multiple things, if that's what I'm hearing.
If it would be a, let's say, health assisting teacher, right now, we are oversubscribed with our health assisting students, and it makes going out on clinical very difficult because it's supposed to be ten to one, and we're not at that ratio, we're well over that ratio. If we bring in, let's say, a health assisting teacher who is also very active with the co-op program with regard to going out to clinical, now that teacher can come in and maybe do two classes and then take the kids out to clinical and have that be our first line of co-op that we can start to expand on, and/or maybe Construction Craft Labor, because I also see that being a big piece of our co-op program. And then there's always early education and care, although, early education and care, I want to keep right in-house whenever we can, because, you know, hopefully, we're gonna expand for next year.
Yeah, I agree with all that. If you take a look again at the rationale, what we're asking sometimes is not articulated in here, so that's why I'm asking the question. But your answer is totally fine. The teacher leads is teacher stipends, is that what that, it's gonna be paid like a regular teacher lead, is that what this means?
So, the teacher lead is, I don't know if, I don't know how in Fall River it's worked. I think it's a stipend, that's how I understand it to be. But that is for programs that have to deal with the public, really, that have to deal with the public. And really, they run a business. And that's different than just running a CTE program. You can run a CTE program but not have to run a formal business. The Granite Grill is a business. It is, it is, it's fluid, it has customers who come in, we have no idea how many are coming in. They have, they have to do procurements from different vendors. And to be honest with you, that is beyond my, I have no idea, I'm not a chef, I don't know what to order on that. So somebody has to take that lead. Right now, our teachers are taking that lead. And they're doing it because they know it's the right thing to do for the kids. But we do need a point person who can take that lead, so I can go to them and say, hey, what do we have today? What do we have this week? What do we have going on next week? We have a big banquet, are we all set with Cisco? You know? So I think that that's really important with regard to our public CTE programs.
And I can imagine that they're not gonna be able to do that while they're teaching the kids. It's gonna require after-hours time.
Correct.
I have no problem with the stipends, I just wanted to make the clarification that it, it's in addition to a regular teaching job, it's not a new position from outside bringing in somebody...
No, no, no. It'll be somebody in-house where it would be after the school day is over.
Yep. The, is the sports one on here? Is that not you?
That's separate.
Departments, it'll be in departments.
That's not now.
On Wednesday.
The, you mentioned about the absences are better or whatever, so I think attendance is always an issue for everyone, including for your school. And I think we've already asked for the data, but I'd ask you to, I'm curious to see what it looks like moving each month or whatever for year.
Sure, sure. I'll say, through today, the average daily attendance is eighty-three point eighty, eighty-three point eight. We, attendance was horrible, all fall, you know, and we tell people, stay home if you had the sniffles, let's face it. So we were running in the seventies, high seventies. When we got back from the holidays, it immediately surged into the eighties. We're knocking on the door ninety percent. You know, our attendance, we always wanted to improve it, hovered around ninety-two, ninety-three percent at best. On a good year, we were making strides. And so, with things feeling like they're normal right now, you know, the default policy will be in full implementation this term. And when we look at the school year up through March 2020, we were making major gains with attendance. So, that's a primary focus. If we look at it right now, our DESI target is sixty percent chronically absent for the year. At mid-year, as you saw on that sheet, that's right where we were. Since then, right now, the projected, right now, is fifty-eight point five. So, we're taking steps. So now, the work for the rest of this year is to take a look at the kids that we can keep from being chronically absent for the year and swarm those teams around them that I described, and let's get that done, right? So, we're taking a look at how far below sixty we can keep that, you know?
No, I hear you. My only last comment, and we talked about this at the AD Building, about the additional administrative positions, and I was quite blunt with you that said I support all these positions, but we need to see results. And I think what you're saying today is, this is now the teaching part of that comment. But I would just say the same thing, and I'm not being cocky, I'm not being, it's just a fact, that we have invested big dollars in supports for the high school over the years. And I've been here long enough to see that change. Now we need the results, and I don't think you're gonna shy away from that. These positions, I think, you know, are targeted, they make sense, but at the end of the day, we just need to see the results. So, I'll stand by the same comment I made before. Thankfully, the state has given us money that, you know, we can actually give to the high school, but we really just need to see the results. So, I appreciate your presentation. I yield.
Thank you.
Anything further for Mr. Damaris? I'm just extremely proud of your graduation rate. It's not my old stomping ground anymore, that's a pile of dirt, but it really does make me feel good. I looked at them today after I had a conversation, and then when you compare us to the other schools, we're right where we should be. Again, we'll see what changes go forward, but apples to apples, we're doing fine. And again, keep up the good work, and I appreciate all your efforts.
Thank you.
With that being said, I don't think we're gonna get to facilities and operations tonight, so our plan would be to move that to Wednesday, so we can get on with the regular meeting. I entertain a motion to adjourn this finance committee?
Motion to adjourn?
I have a motion, a second, Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agio?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Harp?
Yes.
Ms. Lawrie?
Yes.
Ms. Porogor?
Yes.
Ms. Rodra?
Yes.